Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bloomington School Board meeting. Today is Monday, May 29, 2018. It is 7 o'clock. All board members are present except for Chair Steiga. And I'd like to invite you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next we have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda has been approved. So next we have recognition of staff and students. So we have first in the agenda, we have Valley View Elementary Shrek Musical Performance, who are here tonight to delight us with their beautiful performance. So we're inviting a big group of kids. And we have Mr. Raymond Cannon. He's the music specialist at Valley View Elementary. Thank you, Dad. And before you start, I'd like to tell you that after you're done performing, you can stay, the kids can stay here, and then the parents can come and take pictures at the end with your kids.
Before we start, I have a letter from Corey Thompson, the principal of Valley View Elementary. Madam Chair, School Board members, and BPS staff and community, I have asked Mr. Cannon to read this letter on my behalf because I was not able to attend this evening due to a family event. I would like to thank Mr. Cannon for taking the time and energy every year to put on a musical for the VVE community. Mr. Cannon provides the opportunity for our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders to be part of an experience that they will always remember. It is always great to see our students using their gifts and talents to put on a great production. I also want to thank our parent volunteers, the PTA, and other community volunteers that have helped to make the musical a great event at VVE. I hope you enjoy a snapshot of Shrek. Sincerely, Corey Thompson, a very proud principal.
Ready?
Welcome to Duloc, such a perfect town. Here we have some rules, let us lay them down. Don't make waves, stay in line, and we'll get along fine. Duloc is a perfect place. Please keep off of the grass, shine your shoes like a face. Duloc is, Duloc is, Duloc is a perfect place.
We spent our whole lives wishing we weren't so freaking strange. They made us feel that way, but it's they who need to change.
The way they think that is.
Let your freak flag wave. Let your freak flag fly. Never take it down, never take it down. Raise your way up high. Let your freak flag fly. Fly, fly, fly.
Be a prophet, so let his strength attack. It's a perfect life.
How you were acting.
Let your freak flag wave. Let your freak flag fly. Never take it down, never take it down. Raise your way up high. Let your freak flag fly.
We've got magic, we've got power. Who are they? They say we're wrong. What makes us special?
What makes us special makes us strong. Let your freak flag wave. Let your freak flag fly. Never take it down, never take it down. Raise your way up high. Let your freak flag fly. Fly, fly, fly.
I'm mean, I'm green. Get used to it.
I thought love was only true in fairy tales. Meant for someone else, but not for me. Love was out to get me. That's the way it seems. Disappointment haunted all my dreams.
And then I saw her face. I saw her face. Now I'm a believer. I'm a believer. Not a trace. No, not a trace. I'm dead in my mind. In my mind.
I'm in love. I'm a believer. I couldn't leave her if I tried.
I thought love was more or less a given thing. But the more I gave, the less I got. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Wasn't used to trying. All you get is pain. When I wanted sunshine, I got rain. I got rain. I got rain. And then I saw her face. I saw her face. Now I'm a believer. I'm a believer. Not a trace. No, not a trace. I'm dead in my mind. I believe. I believe. I believe. I believe, I believe, I believe.
Beautiful performance. Now, I'd like to invite the parents to come and take pictures if you wish to. Go closer, you can take pictures with your kids. Take this time to do it.
Madam Chair, while this is going on, and they can spread out, I was over there when they were doing it live, and I just, it was amazing. 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders that now are starting on their road to join Valley View Middle School singers and actors, and then most of them will go on to Kennedy High School to be in the big plays and in the big musicals, right?
Yes.
So you're doing wonderful, and Mr. Cannon has been really super, working his magic for about 25 years that over at Valley View, and it's just, the results are just amazing, and we're so proud of you all.
Definitely. Beautiful, very talented. Thank you. So next we have in the agenda, the student school board representatives reporting recognition. And since we are still waiting for our other student, Ethan Skophammer, we're gonna wait, we're gonna have a little delay, and just move it for a little later while we wait. So then I'm coming into recognition of the public. Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? I have one name here, Pat Hogan. Yes, Mr. Hogan, please come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Pat Hogan, and I live in Bloomington, 11031 Xerxes Avenue South. And I'd like to...
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So I gotta look at my phone here, because I got some notes on here. And the reason that I'm here tonight, I'm with the Stand Up For School Bus Safety Coalition, and I've noticed, I work for UPS, and I drive around the community, and I see some unsafe actions by the bus drivers. And I started doing some research, because there's some different companies that operate in Bloomington. And the one that appears to be the biggest culprit, from my standpoint and my wife's standpoint, and we have a granddaughter that goes to school here in Bloomington, too, it's Durham, which operates under Septrum, Septrum's name. And I just wanted to, the information, I mean, this is what got me really going, was doing some research on this. And that's how I got in with all this, but I just, I would like the school board to kind of pay attention to the, it appears like there's a 25% higher rate of accidents with this company. And I'm not sure why, you know, this is, but it seems to be throughout the country that they're rather poorly operated, and I'd like the school board to pay attention to this, and maybe look at some other bus companies to fill in the gap for this company. And I guess that's about all I really have to say on this, because the rest is kind of self-explanatory. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. So next, we're gonna go back in the agenda, since we now have our two student representatives. So I'd like to invite our student representatives, Ethan Skophammer and Jackson Damagala. Damagala?
One more.
You're not the only one. Every time I say last names. But I'd like you to give your reports at this time. So just go ahead.
I'm Jackson Damagala. I'm a junior at Jefferson High School. And recently at Jefferson, four seniors, Ella Jones, Abigail Falk, Charles Mackey, and Ryan Martz have been selected to represent Jefferson at Boys and Girls State. Each year their American Legion Boys and Girls States are among the most respected and selective educational programs for government instruction for high school students. Also, Bloomington High School seniors Elena Hayday and Joshua Luth are this year's AAA Award nominees. The AAA stands for Academics, Arts, and Athletics. And the Bloomington High School seniors advancing to the finalist round of 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program include David Floder, Joshua Luth, Penny Peng, and Samuel Vecura. And more things with Jefferson, that they've received the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals Bronze Award for Innovation Awards of Initiatives that have positively impacted their school environments. More on Jefferson students, the four high school juniors, Josh French, Charles Mackey, Ryan Maney, and Isabel Fawn earned perfect scores on the ACT. And at the 2018 Metro West Conference Art Competition, Jefferson student Katie Weston won the Award of Excellence, Kelsey Johnson and Rachel Thumka won the Award of Merit. As you know, we also had prom two weekends ago, and I wanted to say I had a great experience in my first prom. When I went through the door, they were doing interviews. I wasn't expecting that they were having cameras. I thought I was at the red carpet. So I don't know if you saw me. Also, this is the Jefferson this year, I would like to thank the board for letting me join them. Hopefully, I'll be back here next year. It was a great experience, and I gotta learn more about what's going on in Bloomington and my school. So, thank you.
Jackson?
So at Kennedy, things are wrapping up. We, us seniors, our last day is tomorrow. Tonight is Senior Achievement Night. I just came from there, that is why I'm late. And we have many, many kids getting recognized for many sorts of things, such as arts, leadership, attendance, and I just wanna let you guys know that Kennedy handed out over $1 million in scholarships tonight. I don't remember the exact number, but over $1 million worth of scholarships, and they totaled that to be over 143 years' worth of schooling at a state school. And that's all I really have on the school. But I just really wanted to thank you guys for all that you guys have done in opening up this opportunity to really grow, me and Jackson and Ally, our previous representatives on the school board, to learn a lot about what goes on in the government, or the schooling part, and just really, really expands our leadership and gives us an opportunity to really work with adults that treat us as their peers, and they treat us, or not treat, they teach us a lot of things about life and the future. And so I just want to thank you guys so much for everything you guys have done for me.
Thank you, Ethan. And we truly appreciate your service in the school board and to our community. We have truly enjoyed working along with you. So, thank you. And I also hear that you have a recommendation for the 2018-2019 student representative to the school board.
Yes.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about that?
A little bit, so the Board Student Advisory Council, we can actually go up there.
Yes. Maybe we should read the resolution before? Yeah, go ahead.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the following students as representatives of the school board for the 2018-19 school year. Jackson Damagala, Jefferson High School, grade 12. Ally Starks, Kennedy High School, grade 11.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the Board Student Advisory Council has been working for the past few years, and this year Kennedy and Kennedy's principal, Carol Campla, and the Board Student Advisory Council have voted on Ally Starks to be next year's Kennedy representative. And this is just a recap of what we've done this year.
So we had six meetings spanning from October to May, a combined total of five to eight students from both schools. We were a little short on Jefferson attendance. Apparently, last year was more Jefferson, now it's switched over, so hopefully next year it'll just even everything out. We covered topics from lunch menus, parking passes, food drive, and personal learning.
So the lunch menus, it was a brief talk, we talked about it in our first meeting. Students believe that although given nutritional guidelines, there's a lack of health awareness to the menu. Some people believe that a guy who is 6'3", 210 pounds probably shouldn't be getting the same nutrients that a girl who's 4'8", 98 pounds. It just doesn't seem like it's an equal distribution in the awareness to the, like, the health benefits that some kids need. And then surveying students around the school, many people are dissatisfied with taste. And I mean, it's kind of hard to work with 400 different kids per grade on taste, but we just discussed this really, really short amount of time, and it mostly kind of stopped because we didn't really want to have to change any part of the budget.
And this year was the first year of flexible learning in Kennedy and Jefferson and some middle schools. So we discussed how to make the learning spaces easier to connect with classes. Some teachers might be a little hesitant to use it, may not implement it on class, and we discussed how teachers are able to include it, maybe once a week after work time, maybe we can just flex out, rent a space. Then we provided feedback from both schools, explained maybe we need wipes which were added to the thing, like to clean it down, because it might get dirty, as well as we now have sign-in codes where you go to your phone, you just press that, and you can sign in, so now teachers know where you are. And people, hall monitors also come around and they clean it, and they also check attendance with their clipboard. So let's say if a substitute teacher, they didn't want a substitute teacher, the teacher can just tell them to flex out, and a hall monitor comes there and makes it easier, and we don't have to have a sub that way, too.
A big focus this year was finding ways to unite Bloomington, both from the respected schools, Kennedy and Jefferson. The major ideas that we had mostly gone through were the Bloomington Dodgeball Tournament and a Bloomington Talent Show. We really narrowed it down to the Dodgeball Tournament, and we had multiple meetings setting up this Dodgeball Tournament and getting space, getting everything set up. And it just so happened that as, when we were doing our propaganda and our voicing what the Dodgeball Tournament is going to be, was during AP testing, where we couldn't really announce anything on the loudspeaker, and so we only had one team sign up, so we had to dismiss that last minute. And then the Bloomington Talent Show was just an idea thrown out.
Bloomington Talent Show, we were working with NHS, because they usually run a talent show at Jefferson, and they decided maybe we should just do that. I don't believe they also had a talent show, but that was our first initial idea, and then we went to the Dodgeball Tournament afterwards, because I feel like people would want to do that more. And for the talent show, we'd probably have to have auditions, judges and stuff. And Bloomington Dodgeball Tournament was something that could bring the whole community together a lot easier than we could with the talent show. And the effects it would have if we unite more between Bloomington, Jefferson, and Kennedy. Connect students from both Kennedy and Jefferson. One of the requirements on the Dodgeball Tournament was that you had to have one kid from the opposite school, and that was the main reason we had that rule, is to unite. And also erase the crosstown feud. Sports is a big thing, you can't really get rid of a rivalry between once a week, a year, for a football. But you can, all those other weeks, you can join a community. It doesn't have to be with sports, it can be maybe yard work, you go around the whole neighborhood, and you might collect leaves like you did in middle school as a community, you can join that. You can start clubs together, and then you can join school board meetings, too, if you wanted, if you wanted to speak for anything. And then just develop new connections.
So I think that the BSAC always does every year, is we raise awareness to this district-wide food drive. And so students from both Kennedy and Jefferson, along with the middle schoolers, came together to form ideas on promoting the food drive. Many ideas were thrown out there, like if you put in dollar bills, that goes to your grades' funding, but then if another team puts in quarters, that lowers the other grades' that they're poundage. So our goal this year was 70,000 pounds of food, and we surpassed that. And then other ideas that we went through are teacher participation, competition and goals, and propaganda. At Kennedy, our goal was to, our competition was, the first hour that raised the most money got to throw a pie in Miss Campla's face, although Miss Campla wasn't in there. So Mr. Hostler volunteered. And then no teacher really, or the winning teacher didn't select students to participate in this, so no pie got thrown in the face.
And for Jefferson, for our propaganda, we decided that the winning class of the first hour, they would take their donations, and for every five pounds, equals a dollar, for each dollar they got, you would take a strip of duct tape, and you would duct tape Mr. Anderson to the wall for a whole passing time, so you can just see your principal against the wall in duct tape. We tried that for food drive. He, I don't know, maybe he wasn't really agreeing with it. I talked to him beforehand, and I don't know, it never happened like the pie, but it was okay, got some people talking.
So future plans, we're gonna continue to have student representatives at respected schools. Next year, Jackson will be the representative, and at Kennedy, we'll have Ally Starks. In previous years, we have been limited to like once, a meeting once every two months, and I think that to really get some results and real, like, some hardcore results is if we do a meeting once a month, and a meeting will take place at Oak Grove Media Center, and we hope to get at least five representatives from each school, but that definitely doesn't limit it to five from each schools. So some possible topics for next year is lunch menus, personalized learning, and other new ideas or issues.
And that's all we have on our presentation, so thank you for listening. And that concludes it.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions?
Oh, I'm sure. We can't let you go. You're in the hot seat, no. So first of all, thanks for the presentation. I loved what you guys did, putting all this together. I'm curious to know, how did you guys come up with the formula to choose the next student school board rep?
Okay, so I can, at the beginning of the year, we were given multiple different options to go through. There was, we could just leave it up to our principal, we could open it up to the whole school, open it up to only the BSAC, and...
Did you say open up the whole school, principal, BSAC, and then maybe our student government?
Yeah. And so within that, we decided that as a BSAC, we wanted the whole school to be, get this opportunity to represent on the school board. We didn't think it was fair to close it to just the BSAC and/or just the student government. So we decided on opening it up to the whole school and letting anyone apply, and then from there, we would have a vote within the BSAC, and then after that, we, after our votes came in, we had to get approval from our principals, and that is how we landed with Ally Starks from Kennedy.
And myself.
And Jackson.
So we talked to the principals beforehand, right, last night I talked to my principal. He confirmed that with me, and then a couple weeks ago, I also confirmed it with the student government, if they're also okay with that. And otherwise, then talking with the school, that was about it for the decision process for me. Oh, my last name is spelled wrong.
I think the, for the folks that are watching at home, they may not know, the way the student school board reps were chosen to begin with, to get us going, we had each of the principals make some suggestions, and as it turns out, they were spot on. But we turned this over to the student school board members, and they put together a process, and they vetted all the candidates, and they chose them. So this is huge progress for these two gentlemen to guide that conversation in the Board Student Advisory Council. So this is what we were thinking, this is what we were hoping, and you guys have really, in my humble opinion, you far exceeded our expectations. You did a wonderful job doing this. I just want everybody to understand how this happened.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a quick question. So the, how many people were interested in the position for student school board representative for next year?
At Kennedy, we only, we had two applicants, and it just so happened that both of them were part of the BSAC. Yep, that's...
So do you think that more information needs to be gotten out to the schools so that more people are interested?
Yeah, that might be, in future years, I would say probably if we want to get more recognition, it would be, put more information out there, and then therefore, we can get more representatives at the meetings as well, and then...
Well, I like the process you guys decided to choose, because the way it's written in policy is that it's up for you guys to come up with the procedure, and we wanted to stay out of it as much as possible, because we wanted you guys to take ownership. And I think you guys did that, and you opened up to the whole school, and you tried to get people to, you know, want to be on board, and it's good that you had two that were interested. You know, it would've been rough if you couldn't find anybody. So it's nice that there's at least a couple people, so there was a competition. So it's nice that there's at least a couple of people. So there was a competition and you guys got to, you know, interview and, and question and, and vote. So I think it's a good job that you guys did.
Director Sor.
In the past, some of the board members would attend the student government meetings at various times and speak about, you know, the board activities, what we do and all that in order to get a broader base, you know, understanding of what actually goes on for the students. And, um, I know in this, within the social studies classes, they talk about it, attending student government meetings and so on and so forth, which has been pretty effective. But, uh, would it be okay, proper, whatever, to have school board members come to the student government meetings?
Yeah, yes. Beth did come to one of my meetings. I mean, the student government meeting, maybe two weeks ago. She talked to the students next year of attending, uh, BSAC meetings. So that was great. I, and maybe future school board members can come to those student government meetings next year, too, to start off the year right. I'm going to be going to those meetings, so I'll get more students involved. And then we'll set up the schedule dates before the school year probably of the once a month in the Oak Grove Media Center. Um, what really drives the students is just mentioning pizza. Maybe they'll get their attention, but.
I, I was encouraged to go to your, um, you know, your student council meeting and they were very supportive, supportive of Jackson and wanting him to continue. So that speaks highly of you, Jackson. And, um, it was really a delight to be in your meeting and I'd love to go again.
Thank you.
Questions? Then we need to vote on the resolution. So going back to the resolution to, uh, for student representatives to the school board for 2018, 2019. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution passes.
Before you guys sit down, can you tell me about their podium?
Yes, please. Next, we have Director Tom Bennett coming to the podium with our two students for special recognition.
So this meeting signifies the, the end of our second year of the experiment of having student school board representatives on the school board. And I think I can speak for all of my fellow board members, as well as the superintendent, that, um, these two fine gentlemen have exceeded our expectations and that we can go beyond calling it an experiment and calling it, and instead calling it standard practice, that we're going to continue on with having student school representatives. For, for myself, I think it's been a, it's been a pleasure watching these two fine gentlemen grow over the past year and for, for Ethan here for two years. I remember the beginning of last year when, when Ethan started, he was, he was kind of shy and reserved and kind of let the other school representatives kind of take the lead of, of the meetings. And just watching him grow meeting after meeting and seeing that second year this year where he just jumped right into it and grabbed the bull by the horns and was the leader. And he did a great job in rallying support from Kennedy and getting people to, from Kennedy to come to the meetings. And probably the most Kennedy participation that I've seen since I've been, in the five years that I've been here. Sure did a great job with that. And I think, you know, Jackson has done an awesome job this year as well. And I'm excited that he's coming back next year so we can continue to see him grow and see him take the active role of, uh, leading those, those, uh, those meetings. And he's another one that the first meeting, he was kind of unsure and didn't know what to do. And, and as you guys just saw them right now, they're, they're pros at this. And I think that they're, they're going to use this leadership experience that's going to help them in, in college and, or whatever future they plan on doing. And I hope they come back and see us, especially, uh, Ethan. We're, we're losing him this year. So hopefully he'll come back and, and give us a, uh, a status update of what he's doing. So as a small token of our appreciation, we have some little gifts for, for student board members. Uh, first we have Jackson. We have a little Bloomington star with their names on it and the year on here. So here you go, Jackson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we go to Ethan. Everyone just join me in a final applause to be clear.
Great. Well, special thank you to Ethan Skopamir, who will be graduating this year and won't be able to be, continue to be with us. But, um, we get to keep Mr. Damagala here with us for next year. So that's great. Well, then next we're coming to approval of part eight of the agenda. Part eight includes board business, field trips approval and finance. Uh, so all in favor of approving the agenda, uh, part eight of the agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Oh, yes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
There you go.
All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our A of the agenda has been approved. Uh, then we're going into part B and we're going to start with, we're going to start with, um, infinite, Infinitec Agreement.
Madam Chair.
Would somebody like to, yes, please.
It is resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the 2018-2019 Infinitec Agreement for Services.
Second.
So now we have Jennifer McCantrell, Executive Director of Special Education.
Good evening. Um, thank you. Dr. Korman, members of the school board, Superintendent Fujitaki. Um, we did bring to the school board to look at Infinitec, which is a web-based, uh, professional development tool that we use, uh, we've used pretty primarily within special education for, um, lots of different professional development, for our teaching staff, for all of our related service providers, our paraprofessionals. Um, this is a means and us, for us to get them disability awareness training, um, they can do as groups within their schools and not have to pull them together for essentially based, um, professional development session. So, um, we put it on here as something for you to consider, um, knowing that we, um, bring all of our, um, new agreements or contracts to the board for consideration. So if you have questions specifically about Infinitec, I most certainly can answer those.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions, then all in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, um, resolution is deletion of policy 721 Business and Non-Instructional Operations. And we have Rod Sitkovich, Executive Director and Finance and Support Services with us. Would somebody like to read the resolution, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the deletion of policy 721 Business and Non-Instructional Operations.
Second.
Good evening, Director Gorman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. Um, this is a process of, uh, a couple of policies that I have here tonight. Uh, the first one, 721, which you just mentioned, was, um, with MSBA, they, uh, added a 721 policy with, on a different topic. Uh, so we needed to, uh, remove this policy in that regard. We've been trying to find a place for this policy for quite a few years. Um, so what we're, we're doing is deleting this policy. And then, yeah, as you will see with the next resolution, um, a new policy of 702.4, which will take, um, the pieces that we still need to carry on in policy into that new policy.
There are no questions. Then all in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? You with Mr. Sitkovich. For the next is new policy 702.4, Sale of Merchandise and Services and Solicitations.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves new policy 702.4, Sale of Merchandise and Service and Solicitations.
Second.
As I mentioned, the, uh, with the seven, uh, 21 going away, uh, we took the pieces of the sale of merchandise services and soliciting, um, parts of the policy that needed to be carried on, put it into policy 702.4, which is kind of in the business area within the, uh, the policies, all the board policies. Um, so these carry over the items that we need to carry forward, uh, in policy. And this went to the, uh, Board Subcommittee on Policy on May 17th.
Anybody have any questions?
On my screen, it says that there were more pages on the second one. Did others get it as well and I didn't?
Problem loading more pages? How many?
There's a problem loading more pages. And I had this problem at my home computer, too.
Which, which part do you have? Do you have?
Um, it's on the, um, there's the one version where they're all crossed out. And then the next one is 702.4, Sale of Merchandise and Services and Solicitations.
So it was 721, the one that was all deleted and then 702.4?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm seeing the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's just the language from the other one being moved to another place, so.
Yeah.
That's all it is. That's all it is. I didn't know if there was something else. That's what my assumption was. Okay.
Okay, we're good. Director Bergstrom?
Just a, just a quick statement. First of all, thanks for coming, Rod. Um, just for those that are watching, the three of us, um, Director Bennett, Director Sor and myself are on the policy committee and, and we've sort of pounded these policies to, to pieces already. So if you're not hearing questions, it's, it's not because we're not interested, but we're leaving it for those that are on the policy committee.
Very good. Any other questions? No? And no questions. And all in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
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 Resolution passes. And thank you. Now I'd like to call Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby as we continue with our policy review. Uh, we're going to revise policy 503.1, School Attendance Areas.
Madam Chair, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves policy 503.1, School Attendance Areas.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Korman, uh, members of the board and Superintendent Fujitaki. Uh, I have with me this evening, Dr. Jenna Mitchler, who helps immensely with, uh, a lot of the policy work. We have a number of policies, as you can see, on the, uh, docket tonight. And, uh, I appreciate Director Bergstrom's comments about the board policy committee. They are a robust and, and great questioning group. So we had, we had a good meeting about all these policies that Dr. Mitchler and I will be presenting to you tonight already. Uh, 503.1, School Attendance Area. And you'll see the next, uh, piece on your agenda is, is 503.2 and, uh, deletion of that one. Uh, it's because we've rolled the two into 503.1, School Attendance Areas, excuse me, and Student Assignments and Transfers. Uh, there is, it's not mandated policy and there is no MSBA model policy. So we've worked hard at developing our own policy and regulation language for this one. Simplified some of the language from the previous versions of this and clarified, uh, some of our processes in student assignments and transfers.
Any questions? No questions. So all in favor of, uh, approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. And we move into our next one, Deletion of Policy 503.2, Student Assignments, Transfers. Would somebody like to?
Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the deletion of policy 503 dot 2, Student Assignments, Transfers.
Second.
Again, as I just mentioned, we rolled that policy into the previous one I just discussed. So it's not like it's, it's gone away in entirety. It's just embedded in, in 503.1.
Okay. Any questions on this one? No questions. All in favor of, uh, approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Resolution passes. And we moved into our next one, Revised Policy 513, Student Promotion, Retention and Program Design. Would somebody like to read this?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Bergstrom.
Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 513, Student Promotion, Retention and Program Design.
Second.
Uh, so for this particular, uh, policy, this is not a mandatory policy, but there is MSBA model policy language. And so a lot of the updates, uh, that you would see in the policy are reflecting MSBA model policy, uh, um, updates. And there, and there were some pretty substantial policy language updates based on that MSBA model policy. Otherwise, we had good discussion at the board policy committee about this and, and tweaked some of the regulation language. And we would recommend moving forward.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, just going to say that this, this is one, and some of these from the Subcommittee on Policies, we've gone through a lot of these and it's been very helpful to have Jenna here to go checking so many of these policies, the MSBA model policies that we have. A lot of times in the past, as you can see some of the dates, June of 2003, March of 2008, were the last times they were reviewed and not many changes occurred. But once the MSBA model policy was developed and we use that a lot, then we find that there are some significant, not discrepancies, but just wording that, that needs to be included. And after, um, ten, ten years, I guess there's a lot of words that are changing in our, um, in our policies and curriculum and so on like that. So while as, as, um, Eric has explained, we do get into some conversations about MSBA policies versus our own policies. And we're relying on the staff at MSBA who has significant lawyers and others, doctors involved in doing a lot of research into policies and the regulations that follow. So sometimes when we delete one and we add another one, it's, it's for the, for the benefit of all. I think that's what I wanted to say. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No. All in favor of this resol, of this resolution, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Madam Chair, one other point then.
Yes.
And these are all on our website. So anybody can go in and look at them and really study them hard if they want to. Light reading. Afraid at night when you're, have insomnia.
Okay. Our next one is revised policy 601 dot 1, Graduation Requirements. Somebody like to read the resolution?
Madam Chair.
Director Bibi.
Resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 601 point 1, Graduation Requirements.
Second.
So this policy is a, uh, we're using the model policy from MSBA and we've made modifications to it, just as Jim had mentioned. So thank you for that, Jim. Uh, and we, uh, you'll notice that the, the change that we've made to the policy in this case is just purely around formatting. I also wanted to mention that David Holman reviews our policies and any edits that we make to them as well. So we have our own, uh, legal assistance with any modifications that we make to MSBA policy as well. I'm happy to answer any questions about that policy, if you have them.
Any questions?
And we get to blame it on David.
I had one. I noticed that, um, the students are required to have either physics or chemistry. And when I was visiting a, um, chemistry class, uh, chemistry, physics teachers' class at Jefferson, um, she said they actually have, um, two kinds of chemistry, those that are college-bound and those that are not to accommodate students. And I thought that was a very nice addition. It's not stated here that there's a different levels, but, um, I'm glad they accommodate that.
Sure, of course. And all of our students are allowed to opt into the courses that they would like to take. So, yeah, it's great to offer those choices.
Any other questions? No questions. All in favor of this resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Passes. Next one is revised policy 610, Field Trips. Somebody read the resolution, please?
The School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 603, Curriculum Development? Are we reading the wrong one?
Second. That's the next one.
Yeah. If you want to do 603 and then 610.
Oh. Did I miss one? 603?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's curriculum development.
Revised policy 603, Curriculum Develop.
So I did read the right one.
There you go.
Shall I read it again?
Well, yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 603, Curriculum Development.
Second.
I think it was a short one.
So this is a mandatory policy that we've adopted from MSBA and we've only made some minor modifications to make it match Bloomington Public Schools vocabulary. The change that you see noted here in the policy is a change- The change that you see noted here in the policy is a change from talking about achievement of essential standards or seat time being what's required for students. We are trying to use vocabulary around proficiency of standards, so expecting that students are proficient in the standard, the content of the standards, and have mastered the standard. So you'll just see that that one change has been made under definitions of essential standards. See there.
Questions? No questions? All in favor of this resolution, say aye. Any opposed? Now we move into revised policy 610, field trips.
Madam Chair. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 610, field trips.
Second.
This policy is not mandatory, and so we've also taken up the MSBA model policy here, and again modified it. I'm going to just talk over a couple of the changes. Any changes that have been made to the policy, of course, went through our Policy Committee, as we discussed before, but also were discussed with principals and our health services folks, so they collaborated with us to make some of these changes. So the first thing really is just formatting. You'll notice is matching the Bloomington Public Schools formatting that we typically use. Language in the general statement has been changed to reflect our district's emphasis on standards-aligned teaching, as I sort of mentioned with that last policy there, so we've removed the word objectives and instead have standards there, so that we have alignment of vocabulary. You'll notice that a description of supplementary field trips was removed, because they are, in essence, the same as the enrichment field trips, and so we use the same process for both. So in working with the middle school principal, one of our middle school principals and health services, you know, we just decided that it would be best to eliminate the supplemental as a description there, because it's the same as the enrichment. You'll notice that there's a reference to School Board Policy 540 that's been added, mentioning that hazing prohibition is something that should be upheld in our field trips. And then, under Section E, you'll notice there's some language added about summer field trips. So summer field trips that are outside of the continental U.S. will not be sponsored by Bloomington Public Schools.
Director Sorm?
Madam Chair, Jenna, Eric, sometimes, like you said, when we review policies, they need to go, or should go, to various other groups within the district principals. Do some of these go to the parent advisory committee too, or does that get into a different structure or format?
Yeah, I would say at times, some of the things that we look at in these policies do come up in conversation at, for example, our Pathways Advisory Committee, so I can't remember a time where I explicitly said, "This is policy 603, what changes would you recommend?" But we certainly talk about the processes often. For example, whenever our curriculum review specialists come to present, they go through the process, and there's an opportunity always for them to provide feedback.
Thank you.
Director Bibi?
I had a question about summer field trips outside the continental U.S. It says here that they are not sponsored by the district, but they can be a private venture. And I'm wondering, has our district had groups that have done that in the past, and do you foresee that in the future?
Yes, Director Bibi, we have, and we have a couple of trips this summer, actually, that are going overseas, that are not going to be school, district-sponsored, but teacher-led through international field trip organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? No questions? All in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? Next one is revised policy 616, school district system accountability. Someone like to read the resolution?
Madam Chair.
Director Berstrom?
He resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 616, school district system accountability.
Second.
This is a mandatory policy, so we've adopted the mandatory policy from MSBA. It is required that we review this policy annually, so that's why you saw this last year, and you're seeing it again. I'm going to talk about just a couple of small changes. So the first is under definitions. The word credit means, again, that we want students to show mastery of the standards, and it's not based on seat time, so there's been some language added to articulate that. And then we've removed the definition for graduation standards, because we don't use that terminology throughout the rest of the policy or the regulation, so just to clean things up, we've removed it there. Then there were a couple of changes to the section Establishment of Goals, Implementation, Evaluation, and Reporting. You'll see that there was some language that was adjusted for clarity around the Pathways Advisory Committee, and they're providing recommendations around the Pathways milestones. Then there was also some language that was removed for redundancy reasons, and a little bit of adjustment for clarity. And then, you'll notice at the very end, again, there was a little bit of redundancy, so some language was again removed. So just sort of cleaning things up, but for the most part, the same as the policy MSBA puts out for us.
Okay. Any questions? No questions? All in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution passes. Next one, revised policy 620, on that one, college-level courses grade, grade weighting. Yeah, Director Berstrom?
Be resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 620.1, college-level courses, grade weighting.
Second.
So there was only one change made to this policy, and that's around formatting, and you can see that change that's been made.
No questions? All in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes. Next one, revised policy 903, visitors to school district buildings and sites. Would somebody like to read this resolution?
Madam Chair, be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 903, visitors to the school district buildings and sites.
Second.
Recently, the administration discovered that we are not in compliance with the state law. The Minnesota state statutes require all Minnesota school districts to have a policy that provides PSEO students with access to a computer and other technical assistance they need to complete the coursework. So this proposed policy brings us into compliance with that law, and it also provides additional language where PSEO students are assured access to our school facilities. We took this opportunity to also change the name of the policy to bring in alignment with the reference manual policy by MSBA.
Any questions? No questions? All in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Any opposed? Brings us to School Board Goals, 2018, 2019. Superintendent Fujitaki?
Yes.
Somebody like to read the resolution, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Director Berstrom.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves its goals for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
Every year, the School Board adopts goals for the coming school year. This year, the Board reviewed these goals at their Board Retreat on May 21st, and the administration supports these goals and recommends approval by the School Board.
Any questions? All in favor of approving the resolution of School Board Goals, 2018, 2019, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution passes. And we come to Superintendent Goals, 2018, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves Superintendent Goals for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second. Superintendent?
At the May 21st Board Retreat, after the Board approved their goals for the coming school year, we discussed, and the Board agreed to the Superintendent Goals that align with the Board Goals, and that was done at the May 21st Board Retreat. So administration recommends approval of these goals.
Very good. Any questions?
I just always like to question. Board Goals and Superintendent Goals are two different sets of goals. In the past, we've used Superintendent Initiatives. Now, granted, there might be, superintendent might have initiatives going toward the goals, but are they synonymous, or is that just old-school, and now it's just Superintendent Goals and School Board Goals?
It's the latter. We agreed that we would move forward with goals for both the Board and the Superintendent.
And they're different.
They're, the goals are different. The Board has theirs, and my goals align with your goals.
Right, right, so there is some alignment for that.
Just like it, only different?
Mm-hmm, something like that.
It would, if I may interject, it would be really difficult for the district, under the supervision of the Superintendent, to go in one direction and the Board to go in another. So at some level, they need to overlay.
And the Superintendent's role is to serve the Board.
Alignment is important. Good. All in favor of approving Superintendent Goals, 2018, 2019, please say aye. Any opposed? Very good. It passes. So now we're coming to, after the long list of policy reviews and goals, and thank you everyone for this wonderful job, including Jenna, who's not longer here, I think, we're coming to Board Member Reports. Somebody like to start?
Jim, you want to go?
No, because I was going to supplement what you were going to say, but I will go ahead.
There you go.
Director Bergstrom and I, using the unofficial car, participated in the Memorial Day Parade yesterday, and it was just a beautiful morning that we did, and it was bigger than before as we marched and rode down Lyndale Avenue from 94th Street to the cemetery, where there has a wonderful memorial service. The interesting thing was that we drove with the Bloomington Schools insignia right on the car, and then following us was the JFK Band, and they played constantly, from the beginning to the end, various military tunes, but it was just really nice that we participated in there, and our hats off, and thanks go to John Ingerburton and the Kennedy Band for being there to participate. They've done that now for several years. Another report I'd like to talk about, other than we already saw the elementary school participate, and there's just a great future for an awful lot of our students as they go on in the Valley View Campus and then on the Kennedy, so it's a great opportunity for them. But there was also another exciting activity that went on called the Battle of the Books. And this was five elementary schools had teams of sixth, fifth graders who had to read 20 books each for the team, and then they faced off in a quiz bowl setting, where they were asked questions, and they had to name the title of a book. So we have a couple of slides that shows all of the kids that participated in it. Some kids read all 20 of them, and some divided up the teams so that they each would read five or so, but the comprehension and recall was significant. The winning group was Normandale Hills, and it was just, like, as I was sitting there watching it, it was just Andy Kubus was reading the questions, and some of these kids just knew instantly which book it was from, and others struggled to figure out what it was, and so if they lost it, the other team could challenge, and then maybe win and get an extra point. But that was, that was good, and it reminds us that at this time of the year, there are so many different activities going on with so many schools, where we showcase the students and what they've done. One of them was I, Jefferson and Kennedy both had achievement award evenings, and I was there, honored to be able to present Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Pins to students who were entering into the military. Now, the pin represents the support the program provides for vets and their families, and Bloomington was named Yellow Ribbon, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Community in 2013, and we've gone out to many times to various veterans' families and helped them while their spouse, the father, whoever it was, was overseas or in active duty. But of all the awards that were presented, we're just so proud to be able to say we're a district that prepares kids so well that they can go out and choose any career, any college, any university that they want. And that's really something to be proud of for the district. I'm sorry, Dick, I'll go on one more. We have a Superintendent Evaluation that was sent out to everybody, pretty much the same format that we've used before. Please fill it out, and add comments, and return to Deb by June 4th. Then the Subcommittee will meet June 6th, Wednesday, June 6th, at 4:00 p.m. to consolidate. We found a conflict with June 7th, so we want to have it June 6th, so we have to get that out, June 6th at 4:00 p.m. And at the same time, Madam Chair, I need to make a resolution, a resolve, for a closed session after the 6/11/18 Board Meeting, for a closed session for our Superintendent Evaluation. So I move that, that, be that.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed?
Closed session, 6/11, and our.
Closed session, 6/11.
I think that's all I have for tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Next one.
Madam Chair.
Director Berstrom, yes.
Well, I can't let the two guys go, especially Ethan, without mentioning our two student School Board reps. You saw the presentation that they gave earlier tonight, but it really has been a lot of, a lot of fun, as Director Bennett said, to watch these guys grow into their positions, to grow as students, to grow as they helped us. They might, you guys might not have known it, maybe you don't, maybe you're well aware of it, but you do add to the School Board. It's, it really has exceeded my expectations. It's a, it's a great pleasure to have you guys here, and I hope you guys understand that. It's, you don't just take up space. You bring the students' voice to us, and the way you go about doing it, the way you do your research, you talked about, I think last year you were talking about parking fees. Okay, you found out how interesting that conversation is, but you wanted it, and you got it, and you discussed it, and you worked the problem through from beginning to the end. And that's, that's the way this should go. So you guys, you did a wonderful job, and here I am again just saying thanks. Our lunchrooms are looking for volunteers. Once again, if anybody, I know the thousands that are watching online now are wondering how can they give back, and one of the ways that you can give back to the district is to contact the front office at any one of our schools, just the front desk, whoever picks up the phone there, and tell them that you're interested in volunteering. If you have a half hour to give, perhaps reading, if you have a couple hours over lunchtime, you can volunteer in a lunchroom. Every one of our buildings has a meal program. You can ask to see if they need volunteers for breakfast. I don't know. I have, over the years, served breakfast at different elementary schools. I know that we need volunteers, we're looking for good people. So, you know, contact the schools, contact the front office, and they will get you in touch with the right person. Tell them I sent you. Just a quick adjunct to what Jim had mentioned about yesterday's memorial parade, just wanted to say what an honor and a privilege it was to be a part of that parade. We were in front of the band, so I went to sleep singing The Halls of Montezuma, I think is what it was, over and over, because they were hitting all the notes. It was, it was really, really nice to see so many people out there, so appreciate that opportunity, and that ends my. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Any other reports? Director Bibi?
I feel like I've been a traveling School Board member and traveling to the different schools and enjoying it. And I went to three different elementary schools. I was at Hillcrest last week and thoroughly enjoyed seeing all of the art that was being done in the school and even being able to participate and help some kids on a project. I could see the dedication of the teachers and the creativity and definitely a great opportunity for our students to be able to have that type of a school available to them. So if you haven't considered Hillcrest, it's definitely one to look into. Appreciated all the teachers that let me come into their classrooms and stay. And I wish I could have stayed longer. I was heading to another school. Another school I really enjoyed was Indian Mounds. And for those of you out there that are watching and wondering if our technology referendum really makes a difference, I can say it does. And I saw the students using it in a variety of ways and, you know, making progress. I had them doing some reading to me and with me. And I planned to only stay, you know, a couple hours there and I just got so involved, it was like three and a half hours I was there. So definitely take the time and get into the schools. I think you'd really enjoy seeing what's happening. Another school I went to was Washburn and they were also very enjoyable. And I got into some great conversations with the students. They wanted to know about the School Board and what they do. And I think we have some future School Board members among them. They seem to have a lot of information that they wanted to know and learn. And so I told them to watch us. I also had my first opportunity to take a tour of Valley View Middle School. And that was very enjoyable. And I hope to get back there to visit classrooms. But our principal there, Megan Wilrett, is just a wonderful lady and really cares about those students. So that was great. Have one more visit to go and I'll have three more I'll pick up in the fall. Enjoying it. And then tonight was really a delight to see what was happening at Kennedy. The presentation of the top 10% of the class and receiving their cords for graduation. Seeing Ethan get some scholarships. And my hat is off to you. And just some other students really receiving a variety of kinds of scholarships from our community, just to see the dedication of our community to our schools. So thank you very much for all of you who contributed to those scholarships.
Thank you. No other Board Member Reports? Then we go into Superintendent's Report.
Great, thank you, Chair. High school graduation ceremonies. Jefferson will be on Monday, June 4th and Kennedy will be on June 5th. Both will be started at 7:00 p.m. at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Metro South Adult Basic Education Graduation Ceremonies will be on Thursday, June 14th at 7:30 p.m. at Olson Middle School Auditorium. Next thing is last day for students. Seniors is tomorrow. Congratulations. And last day for all the remaining students is on June 7th. And I'll take this opportunity to thank all the parents, students, and staff for all their hard work and all, and their efforts to make this a great school year, especially the passing of the Operating Referendum in November. Thank you for your support and on behalf of School Board and School Community, thank you, everyone. Best wishes for a safe and relaxing summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other business tonight? No? Then we need a motion, right, to adjourn?
Someone?
Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor of adjourned in the meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
Good job there, Nellie. Was it fun? Try him out for next year, maybe?
Actuary, right?
Actuary, yeah.
Now, which school is your...
Can you come back and see us and tell us?
What's going on?
Did you get one of the glass here?
Ah, yes, I did.